I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order for Committee of the Whole Meeting. Thank you all very much for being here. It's Monday, February 25th, and we're a little bit late. I apologize for that. I'll turn it over to Councilman Trey Whitehurst for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible). Dear all, we give you thanks today for the opportunity to be in a country that allows us the freedoms to be able to gather and run. Our government is self-government by the people. We give you thanks for this great county we live in and all the great opportunities you've brought to us. We ask today for your guidance and wisdom as we do the county's business and just help us to do everything that uplifts you. We ask all this from our name. Amen.
(inaudible). Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Whitehurst. Alright, I'm gonna wait till he comes back before we jump right back in here. Again, thank you all for being here. We have, it's already been a busy week with GPATs and Southern Wesleyan University today, and so still getting a lot, getting a lot done in a day. Do I want to start with that? Alright, Smoke, what you got?
It's not raining.
And, well, you know, to be honest with you, I was walking outside going, "I'm actually gonna get a sunburn just walking out here because I've been without the sun for so long."
Well, apparently it's not gonna last long from what I'm hearing. But the lake is up.
Yeah.
It goes next to the core.
Lake levels up right now, couldn't it?
Yeah.
You know, I didn't want to start without you. I was trying to figure, making sure something else wasn't wrong. Alright, our first item for Committee of the Whole is Log Number 116, Request from District Three, Council Member for Council to Consider Vineyard Fire District Proposal to Purchase New Fire Truck from the Fund Balance. You guys have gotten your information. Mr. Wilson or Scott, do y'all wanna brief everybody on?
Yes, sir. The vineyards that came a couple, few months back and asked about purchasing a truck, we sent counsel, they came to counsel, counsel actually asked them to go back and do petitions from the property owners. I think the petition came back, correct me if I'm wrong, Rocky. Was it 62, 64 percent of property owners agreed with this proposal? They presently have $734,000 in their fund balance currently. Estimated revenues this year will be about $33,000. They got about $288,932 in estimated expenditures. The revenues for the five months will be about $127,000 with about $336,715,000 in expenditures for the next five months. At the lowest point, they'll have about $269,367 cash flow at the lowest point. I know the truck, according to what Scott, Scott approved from the Emergency Service Board, Mr. Peters here, the truck does align with, if the county decided to go with the plan that the Emergency Service Board has on the table, it does align with that plan. Is that correct?
This might not be considered as working.
I guess you guys, kinda goes back to you guys, do you wanna do it? If you do, do you wanna?
Yes, I think we should, especially with the deal was worked out. Tell them if they want to need to get signatures, they did, they fulfilled that overwhelmingly with over 50 percent in support of this. I said we go forward with it. We do not go forward with this, then that means we did not stick true to the word of what we told them.
Now, look at the finances of that. How much are they going to pay upfront? How much are they going to bond?
Rocky, do you wanna step to the table here and kinda brief them, or that's a roe question, I guess?
Yeah, that's fine.
No, the, working with Ralph to determine how much we could take out of the reserves that we have, and then the rest, it looks like it would be like a four-year bond to pay for the, pay for the truck. And in doing that, it would reduce the mill rate that residents are currently paying the existing bond that expires in a couple of months, reduce that by one, one mill rate.
Thank you.
So what is the number that we're looking at bonding versus the number we're looking at putting down?
Now, Ralph recommends we keep about 15 percent of the $269,000 of your cash flow in the bank. I guess that, that comes down to you guys. Our financial policy recommends that we keep between 10 and 15 percent of our operational expenses on hand for our reserves. 10 percent would be somewhere in, correct me if I'm wrong, Rocky, I think y'all's operational budget was about $850,000 a year approximately. If you kept 10 percent, you'd keep $85,000. If you wanna go 15 percent, you'd do $120,000.
But they got $269,000.
They'll have $269,367.
At the lowest point.
Yeah, at their lowest point.
So you can go about $180,000. They can still afford to have about $180,000.
You can go as low as you guys feel comfortable.
It's still the four-year bond regardless. And also want to add that it'd be a domino effect of helping some other districts as well, correct?
That's correct.
One fire truck, their fire truck goes to Holly Springs, the other from Holly Springs to Rocky Bottom, so three fire districts benefiting because of their generosity of the cliffs.
That's correct.
So I think that's something else we need to consider.
I think they said the estimated trade-in value, they wanted to trade the truck in, I think y'all said it's approximately $100,000.
Correct.
Did I hear that correct? Instead of trading the truck in, they wanna give it to Holly Springs.
What was the cost of this truck?
$425 or something like that.
$425, yes.
I wanna say. That's probably.
That hasn't gone out for bid or any, I mean, just that's the estimate.
That's the truck and the equipment to furnish, to supply the truck.
Correct.
I think from what I understood, the existing truck and all the equipment on the existing truck would be given to Holly Springs.
That's correct.
Which it would benefit the neighboring district.
Now, on the bond, you were talking about dropping the millage. If you didn't drop the millage and you left the millage rate exactly where it is today, would you pay off the bond any quicker?
We could, and that, you know, depending on how much we can take out of our reserve plus that, we could, we could pay it off quicker, yes.
Now, I talked to Ralph a little bit today, briefly. Ralph said if y'all wanted to go down as low as 10 percent, he would.
But it doesn't sound like that's an issue. Doesn't sound like that's an issue.
No, it's not a big issue. He said that you guys kinda give us guidance on what you wanna do, decide you wanna do it, you will work for the vineyards to make it happen.
So from what I'm hearing, worst-case scenario, they don't change their millage rate at all. The other bond expires, they add this bond on to it, there's no tax increase for them right there. They add, take a $100,000 truck, hand it to somebody else, they get a new truck that's paid off in four years or less.
Yes, sir.
And we don't dip anything below what they have for cash flow.
Correct.
So it just comes down to the fact whether we wanna let them do it or not. But from a financial standpoint, I'm not seeing anything that bothers any financial scenario.
From our standpoint, they're.
Or even a tax-based scenario where it's hurting the taxpayer when they're getting a tax increase.
That's correct.
Because they're basically expiring one bond and going right into the next one. And so that's not gonna affect them so much, but they're gonna get a new truck, basically paying the same they are now.
That's correct.
Is that?
Yeah.
That is, yeah.
The only caveat to that is, is the elephant in the room, fire plan across the board, that that bond would be absorbed into whatever if you were to go that route with, and I realize that's a chicken and egg conversation, but that's really where we're at.
Well, I don't know that it would. It would still be held, they would still be responsible for that bond. We wouldn't necessarily, how we take it, whether we take the debt off of that or not, it's a decision we make at the time. If we do a consolidation, we make that decision at the time.
That's correct.
We can't assume we're gonna do that right off the bat. We can say, "This is gonna be your responsibility, it is your responsibility," and we won't necessarily have to take that on.
Well, here's the thing that I'm, I'm looking at. I don't see this happening quickly, and I think you've mentioned this too. I mean, I'll, this is something that we were taking, we're making pain, painful efforts to make sure that we're doing the right thing at the right time and not just jumping into anything. So we're being very methodical and slow at the process of doing this to make sure it's right before we do it. So my thought is that if we let them go down to the 10 percent, they'll have it taken, they'll have it paid for before we even implement anything we're gonna do anyway.
And it seems to fit into the plan that we're looking at anyway.
Right.
Fits into both plans.
So what would happen, essentially, they're gonna be subsidizing the counties, because they would, if they keep it on there and they'll buy it, then they're already buying what the county's gonna have benefit up down the road, depending on how we do things at the moment.
Right.
Because we can simply say, "If that's your decision to do that, that's your decision to do that," and we won't necessarily have to take that on. We're not responsible to say, "Yeah, we're gonna take on everyone's debt when we do it."
Right.
We can say, "No, we have that ability."
Correct.
Okay.
So we can, we can leave there. We don't have to, we consolidate the financial side of things.
So there'll be many steps in the process as we go from here to there, and those decisions will have to be made as you go. But to say that, no, you couldn't come up with a system, and we reached out within the last two weeks to the, our attorneys who handled this, people drafted the fire ordinance back in 2008 to verify that we have those options.
Councilman Hendricks, you wanna make a recommendation for us to vote on, take it out of committee?
Yeah, I'd like to make a recommendation, take this out of committee. Now, as a group, we, I guess, we need to decide, y'all want to decide.
You can make the motion.
Make the motion.
Alright, that they pay for it, but then the four-year period, if we do consolidate their show on the hook for that.
Sure. I don't think you have to make that motion at any one time.
No, I make the motion that we take it out of committee for them to get their truck.
So make, make a motion that we approve their purchase of the, the fire truck through a bond, keeping the millage the same.
Or, or less.
Keeping the millage the same or less, with being able to reduce down to 10 percent operation.
That's not even gonna be an issue, though.
Yeah, well, actually, I think the plan calls for them to spend some fund balance on trucks, so within that range. What we can do, we've got to have three readings in the public hearing on this, because it's an issue of bond. Between now and the official second reading, we can, Ralph can kinda shore up the numbers now that he has direction.
Okay.
We can shore the numbers up in the second reading.
Are you good with that, what I said?
Can we get it for the first reading?
Probably. We'll try our best.
Don't word it appropriately.
But, I mean, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take this out of committee and have administrative staff do due diligence and bring back at the next council meeting.
For first reading.
Bring it out, we'll have the information.
Alright, there's a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand, and that's coming out of committee. Thank you guys very much. Road maintenance fees, Log Number 66.
Yes, sir. We met with all, following our last Committee of the Whole meeting, we met with all of our city administrators, with the exception of Six Mile and Norris. Six Mile opted not to attend just because they have no roads at all. Norris has one road that's 800 feet long. We've all discussed this at the last meeting, would probably be the, the entity that maintains that road for Norris, they don't have a public works, so. But we took, you guys, you guys gave us some comments on what you wanted to see, Ken drafted an IGA between us and municipalities. Based on the comments you gave us last time, basically, on an annual basis, we would evaluate the roads inside all the municipalities in the county, because we all take in roads periodically throughout the year. The formula for dispersing the funds, if you guys agree with this IGA, would basically, based on a mile. We got a million dollars, we got $100, and we got 100 miles. Each, each mile's worth a dollar. But it'd be based on percentage-wise, money would be kept in a segregated fund. Ken, you wrote that you might wanna go over.
Yeah, so it does set up, as administrators mentioned, it does set up a system where we do it basically by mile. We'll know how much a mile is worth after we know how much we collect in the preceding year. And then it simplifies the system, and this to me is one of the great appeals of this, it simplifies the system to say, "County, you're responsible for the roads that are in the county. City, you're responsible for the roads that are in the city." And you get the unit mile value of that fee to take care of those roads inside the city. So it'll greatly simplify things from our, kinda just procedural standpoint with our Roads and Bridges folks. There's an annual meeting we try to coordinate, that was one of the things y'all gave us as feedback, we try to coordinate our paving along with municipalities so we get more value for the block.
They have the option to piggyback off of ours.
So they can, if they want to, come in and cooperate with us in that way. It's much more of a collaborative approach and a cooperative approach, and I think would greatly simplify and make everything more predictable for everyone.
All of our municipalities have taken us back to their councils and discussed, discussed exactly what we talked about here. They all like the idea of where we are right now. I guess it's pending you guys looking at the IGA, making sure it's exactly what you want.
I have a question. You mentioned about reevaluating the roads every year.
Yes, sir.
Let's take a scenario. A city, we give them whatever county road is in the city. The city adds five miles of roads of city roads. Are we gonna pay them, or does that go into that whole number now?
Yeah, actually, just like us, a good example, every time, we have a subdivision come into Pickens County. Most subdivisions, there's development ordinances in the municipalities like they are in the county. We have a subdivision that adds three miles of roadways to Pickens County. That's, that's roads that will be maintained from that day forward if, if all the development standard ordinance that are met. But I think on an annual basis, what, what everybody agreed to in the room, and we can change it if you want to, is that we would evaluate it to make sure that, as we take, as new, as new development comes into the county and the municipalities, and, you know, you can see.
I guess my question would be, and I'm just thinking through, that if the city were to add five miles of city road, and then add that to the total number that they get paid, the county people would be paying for the city roads that they add on?
If you're building a new neighborhood in the city, you're gonna have people move into that neighborhood, that's additional vehicles that you're paying a fee on, so those people in theory will be paying for their own roads.
That's a good one. We have more people in there. I'm just trying to think through as I'm.
Same with us, and we will probably be the ones that actually add more roads than most of, most of.
I definitely can't add many more roads anymore. I'm just thinking, we would evaluate the roads every year.
Every year, have a meeting, we'll talk about paving contracts, road miles, things like that.
For the overall.
Overviews would it would be. Pretty good.
What about, if the city doesn't maintain the county road within the city, what's the repercussions for that?
Now, this IGA would devolve that road to the municipality.
That's, that's the reason for having this.
It devolves that road to the municipality.
And the city council will complain to them.
But, you know, like somebody said, "That's a county road, they're not going their part." What's the chances of them using county money to promote a city road? What's to keep that?
Actually, the way the ordinance was written, it's not county or city money. The way the ordinance, I didn't realize this, actually, I hate to say this until a month ago, and I was Roads and Bridges Director, and, you know, I've heard many things through the years, but the way the ordinance was written, the ordinance was developed and written in order to maintain municipal and county roads. Not county roads and not municipal roads, municipal and county roads. The whole length, and that's where, that's where we all decided that night, that you take the total, the total mileage and divide it by the total amount available, come up with a, a unit price per mile. Now, inside the cities, I remember one of the, one of the things that Councilman Whitehurst told Clemson, and I thought this was a great idea, you know, "We're not gonna come in and tell you what you need to do or how you need to do it. We're gonna tell you this is the money to do it with, and you guys decide, you know, based on what it is."
So are you got any question about that? So this repeals that ordinance, number 290?
No, no, this is an intergovernmental agreement between Pickens County Council and the municipalities.
Okay, you're saying, so this keeps that ordinance in place?
It keeps the ordinance in place, but the way I understand it, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but this here is an agreement, just like our sewer IGA, we got one with the Sewer Department within municipalities. This here is just, just basically how we operate that fund.
So to get back to the definitions of the fear of cities paving parking lots instead of paving roads.
Yeah, the ordinance kinda outlines what it can be used for and what it can't be used for. And I think this outlines there that the ordinance is the, is the ultimate defining factor of what it can be. Now, keep in mind, and I'll use us as a good example, when you pave in a road, you don't have a subgrade, you don't have a road, if you don't have a pipe under that road, so it's probably gonna be sometimes that they're gonna replace the pipe under the road when they pave in a road, that's part of the road itself. This is probably the fairest solution I've seen so far. It cleans up a lot of confusion between us and the public, because right now, we'll get phone calls, and it's, it's, the public gets caught like a ping pong ball. Know it's them, know it's you, know it's them, know it's you. This cleans things up, but it puts a responsibility, we know when you cross into that city limit boundary, this is, this is a city road. We know when they cross into the county, this is our problem.
Or our state problem.
Yeah.
Are there any state roads inside the cities?
There are. Now, we're actually in the process now, I don't know if you've seen this or not, but we're in the process of identifying our roads a little bit different. You're gonna start seeing a little county seal on county roads as we make new ones going forward. We'll have the county seal for this, and some of our municipal roads have a little hill for municipality and so forth and so on.
They'll be big enough, we can read and write unless you're like.
There's actually, M U T C's got some new guidelines for road signage, I don't know if you've noticed or not, but based on speed limit, signs are changing based on speed limit as they go forward. The existing was a grandfather, but as you do new ones based on speed limits, you have to kinda bring them back into compliance. So you'll see that over time.
The county will feel pretty good.
Yeah, as we do that over time, you'll see that improve. The problem with doing it all at once is the cost of doing it all at once.
Right. Do we have an idea how many state roads are inside the cities?
You know, I don't have that answer for you.
They know that, right?
Wasn't that cheap?
Yes, sir.
It was just city and county. We've got the city and county information this morning, but we don't have the state information.
This is always cleanup between us and the cities.
This is a cleanup between us and the city, and what it does is, is, this is clearly compliant with the ordinance that was drafted in 2001, 2002.
Right.
Up to your first point about taking in new miles and just that and the other, would have any protection over, have a say over, if the state wants to give, say, six-mile road, that's adding road miles without increasing, because you're not gonna increase money there.
We don't have that, but, they can, they can at any point take those roads and shove them right down our road.
And I'll use Pickens County as a good example. In 2008, for whatever reason, Pickens County took a section of Van Clade Memorial Highway from mile marker number four, I think it is, all the way up to Sastras Mountain, from the state, and got absolutely nothing out of it, other than the fact that we got a maintenance nightmare that we don't have vehicles to leave it.
We were told to take that road.
Yeah, I didn't know they answered that.
That's right before I came on board, I didn't say.
But, yeah, a lot of these things with the state, and I hate to say it, state law supersedes county, county law, county law supersedes municipal law, so it's a trickle-down effect.
My next question in the formula, just, just a question, do we have any four-lane county roads?
I know of and off the top of my head, we got some three-lane, turn lanes and things like that, but no four lanes that I know of.
What about our municipalities? Do we have any municipalities that we know of?
You know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know for sure. Clemson owns Highway 93, well, I say Clemson, Clemson University owns Highway 93, never mind. I don't know for sure of any that do.
Although in our, in our meeting that day.
But I'll say this, they're all good with the formula we got, I don't know if we'll go back and try to readjust.
I like, I like.
Well, I'm thinking, and I'm thinking long-term, a mile of road versus a lane mile of road. If I've got a four-lane road, it's gonna cost twice as much as a two-lane road.
I understand that, and a 12-foot road's gonna cost less than a 20-foot road.
Correct.
And it gets back in the county's a good example. We got roads that are as narrow as 12-foot, and I got them as wide as 24-foot. I think what we decided to do is come up with a linear average, some's gonna be, some's gonna, some we're gonna come out with the good, all some we're gonna lose on.
And what you will, I think you'll find, is that'll work itself out a little bit because the, the smaller roads are used a lot less, I think they're gonna last a lot longer. What kills the roads are the 18-wheelers. And when I'm going up 86 and watching these 18-wheelers go up there, I'm thinking, that is just, that just destroys those roads. So it's those bigger roads that are gonna be traveled more that'll last shorter times, but some of the smaller roads may last a good bit longer because they're not the heavy traffic on them.
That's correct.
See, any other questions on the IGA, concerns, things we need to change? I mean, this is just a first pass at it. So far, all of our municipalities seem to be good with where we are, they, they like the idea. Like I said, Norris did request that we become their 800-foot road department, so I think we probably need to just.
So do we, do we need to take this out of committee?
Take it out of committee to full council for vote.
Alright.
I'll make a motion that we take this out of committee, go for a full council approval to approve this.
Second, Mr. Peters, are there any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand, and that goes out.
Can I have?
Yes, sir.
I have to do a road.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure if I'm, I'm good with this. This little parcel of road we had at Clemson University.
Oh, let me tell you what I did, though. I didn't.
I put some thoughts on it.
Well, I'll tell you what, I didn't sign it over on purpose. I wasn't trying to keep you guys in the dark, but I said, you know, after y'all asked those questions, I got the plank, and I went down, and actually, I went to Clemson and asked county parking spots. And you know me, I like a dollar, if I can see a dollar. And, you know, based on, on the parking spots I saw, I said, "Man, there's some money right there." So I went to my registered deeds office, and I said, "Paul, this," because honestly, we just didn't really know for 100% sure who owned what we took. When Ken got the information from Clemson's lawyer, he took them at face value. And we went, went over to registered deeds, I had Paul to go and research the deed. We have absolutely nothing in our registered deeds office for this road, so we sent it to Oak County County. Looks like whenever the road was originally, originally, originally transferred from DOT, that was still, was kinda listed as, as being in Oak County County, because before geodetic data, and all that good stuff. But anyways, long story short, the road was never given to Pickens County. The road was actually not given away until 2016. In 2016, the road, and I've actually got a deed I can send out to you guys tomorrow. In 2016, a portion of that roadway was given to Clemson University.
From who?
From the Cyclops Department of Transportation. When they took Highway 93, they gave them a portion of that, that frontage. The remaining portion, because it was inside the city of Clemson, city limits, was needed to the city of Clemson. So we don't even, like, and we had to respond back to them, because, I'm not gonna lie to you, I called Clemson and said, "Hey, look, guys." You know, I didn't tell them y'all voted to do it, I said, "But we need to talk about how much, what, how much are you wanting to pay for this roadway?" And it's kinda got the conversation started, and we started looking, but come to find out, we don't own it, we never own it.
We got nothing we can do with that.
We can't even give them a deed to it, because we don't own it.
A lot of times you'll see in legal action, when somebody's trying to clear a title, they'll name us, we get a lot of those lawsuits. This looks like kinda the other end of that, like they're wanting to clear the title of that road, so they, they wanted to get a deed from us.
Yeah, now, one thing we did find out is the Esso Club has been selling parking spots for Clemson games, and I think they wanted us to be the fight between them and the Esso Club, is what, what it came down to.
The Esso, and that's on?
That's on that little strip of land right there. But now they know that Clemson owns part, and Clemson University, Clemson University owns the, the frontage part, and Clemson City owns the back part. And I'll send you guys a copy of that deed tomorrow as well.
So we're out of this?
We can't even give them anything, unfortunately, for us. So I thought it would be a great revenue stream for our five oh one C threes.
Well, I was trying to get that little strip of land there by the mountain bridge.
Oh, was you? Yeah, I like it.
You're going to trade what you trade.
Yeah, do a little swap.
Yeah, I was thinking, man, I was thinking we'd give it to the, if they sell them parking spots, thirty of them at a ballgame, give it to our five oh one C threes, and let them make some, make some money on their own. Just a thought process. Unfortunately, we don't own, I'll send you guys that deed tomorrow, too. I wasn't not trying to do what y'all told me to do, I just wanted to follow, make sure I knew what I could do.
Well, you really couldn't do what we wanted you to do in the first place anyway, so. All right, um, on to, um, log number seventy-nine, council rules.
It's going to be a Ken Roper, Ken took y'all's comments last time and drafted some, some possible responses, so.
Yeah, I think the two big areas, y'all would ask me to revisit the language, and I can point you to page six, you should have that in front of you if you go to page six. In rule two-point-three, it talks about the clerk of council, and it clarifies the clerk of councils reviewed by the entire council, and of course, the entire council. But it gives y'all the authority to, in case-by-case basis, delegate that responsibility. And that was what came out of our last meeting last month about what to do there. The other change that y'all had mentioned to, to make the rules comply with what you all wanted, uh, was to, in page eighteen, rule six-point-three. In that rule, you had asked that it be, the annual budget ordinance goes to this committee, the committee of the whole, unless the council in that year decides to send it to an administration and finance committee.
But doesn't it, by law, have to ultimately, ultimately end up in the committee of the whole?
Well, it's got to be voted on by the entire council, so you're right about that. But this just gives you the option, if in a year you want to study a particular part of it, you could send it to some kind of.
Because we've always done it through the committee of the whole, just because that's where.
I agree. So those were the only two changes that came out of the last committee meeting. What I would ask, if it suits you all, is for you to make a motion, taking that out of the committee, and approve it at your next meeting, and then we can put that to bed.
I have a question, did we decide about forming subcommittees?
Uh, the, the language stayed the same from our committee of the whole, let me turn to that. Uh, if you'll look at rule six on page seventeen, that, that language stayed the same based on y'all's comments, although, you know, obviously, it's your rules, so we'll make it read the way you want it to read.
So it says.
But it says may instead of shall.
Okay. There's a couple grammatical things, uh, uh, trust that you'll catch that.
There are some random capitalizations I have come across, but.
Yeah. What was your reason, you know, page fifteen, five oh eleven was deleted?
It's where you're taking that since it's out.
Page fifteen? Uh, that made it mandatory that all revenue measures had to go through the committee on, uh, county administration and finance, and since that committee is optional.
Right.
It doesn't need to be mandatory, so y'all still have that option if you want, but it makes it optional and not mandatory.
If you make a committee of finance committee.
Then that's where we need to do it. Any other questions? Make a motion, anybody want to make a motion, we take it out?
I'll, I'll make a motion, we take the, this out of committee.
All right. Second by Councilman Hudson, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, motion carries. All right, um, log number fifty-five, reviewer fire board and districts.
Yes, I'm going to let Ken Roper, he's going to start off, and Scott will jump in after he gets started here.
Just a, a couple of quick points on the law, as he gets the PowerPoint up, and Scott will tear his PowerPoint, so I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, piggyback on Matt, thank Scott. But just to kind of set the table a little bit, uh, you may all know, you may not know, in two thousand and eight, county council made a big change in the way fire was provided in Pickens County. Prior to that, we had thirteen different fire districts with thirteen different enablements and thirteen different sets of rules on how they operated. Some of them were the same, some of them were different, some of them had different time periods, different, uh, descriptions, the way they're described. And so in two thousand and eight, county council at the time took a big step towards consolidation in the sense that they consolidated, standardized the ordinance into one ordinance that applied to all thirteen. And that's what you'll see in this next slide. Uh, really, the way that it was set up back then is that a board of commissioners for each district was, uh, was, was formed. It was appointed by county council after an advisory election that was held at the annual meeting of the fire board. The only thing in the ordinance that really these fire boards were tasked with doing, other than meeting, taking citizen input, and coming up with a, a slate of recommended commissioners, is to prepare a proposed operating budget. If you'll see down about halfway through, and if you could go back, I apologize, but. The county council shall then consider that budget and may approve in total, modify, or amend the budget. Upon approval, the council shall certify to the county auditor that the fees are collected according to that budget. So ultimately, the budget authority, uh, absolutely remained with county council. The only thing under our ordinance that the fire districts were supposed to do through their board of commissioners was come up with that proposed budget each year, and then watch it as the year went on to see if it met with the needs for the next year's meeting. Uh, that's sort of brings us to where we are now, where we have these thirteen different districts that are operating under the one set of rules. But I think I'll turn it over to Scott, because he wanted to talk to you a little bit about the, uh, current way the boards are operating.
We'll get through the rest of these budgets, so that's just the, uh, the county ordinance as far as what the, uh, what the court and the fire districts are, are considering. Currently, what, what you have on this slide is, this is a list of each district and the number of active, or a number of members that, that is, that compose as each of these boards. Uh, as you'll see, uh, the majority of them, the, uh, the really only con- constituted quorum at this time. The vineyards and the springs, and, uh, the Eastley District.
Holly Springs.
And Holly Springs, uh, I'm not sure about Holly Springs, I think I saw a misprint on Holly Springs, I apologize, because they've got two members of Holly Springs, and we really can't find those two members, they're, they're kind of missing in action even in the area, so. There's really basically three districts that, that constitute having a quorum, uh, so that's kind of where we're at. Some of the issues that we've, you know, as we look at the emergency services in general, we've implemented the process and reviewed all the emergency services that, uh, have been delivered within Pickens County. Pickens County Council established an emergency services board with representation from all council districts. And then Pickens County desires to promote unity and reduce duplication of services wherever, whereas utilizing individual boards and boundaries just by their nature, by focusing on their, their little part of the county, it does create some division amongst the, in, in, embedded into the system. Again, focus on individual boundaries has led to some stations and equipment being, if you look at it globally, as a, as a county of a whole, we've got some stations that, that could have been placed in better locations to serve, better serve the, the county as a whole. So we've got, uh, some stations have been ineffectively placed with lines drawn, that were drawn based on really financial reasons. Where was, where was the funding coming from? Way back when the lines were initially drawn, you'll notice some of the larger districts took in and made sure they got the textbooks included in their fire districts. And now that those have, have gone to the wayside. But, uh, a lot of those lines were, were developed on, by that purpose, because that's where the money was coming from, so they wanted to secure their, their funding. Uh, districts, we, you know, historically, we, we've not done a good job of communicating amongst ourselves between fire districts. Uh, it's got, it has improved, it's gotten a lot better. But, uh, we're, we're so focused on what I need, what I need, what I need, not what, what I, what I purchased, does it benefit my neighbors? Or does it benefit the neighboring departments around us? So we're, we've been focused on the individualized system for so long that, you know, some of the things we bought, that we bought for this particular district won't work with our neighbors. It's not interoperable, so we, you know, we've created some instances there where we've, uh, where we've bought inconsistent equipment, and, and it's related to some inoperable, inoperable equipment, it won't work between the other departments, so. And that's, that's something we're working, we want to, we want to correct. Uh, in the past, some of your fire boards have gotten into the daily operations. Uh, they've been dealing with personnel decisions, uh, hiring, recommendations on, on termination, so, and those, those go to the, the county administrator. The daily operations, a lot of the board chairs would, would dictate to the fire chief what he could or could not do, what he could purchase, what he could not purchase. In areas like that, which is outside near the scope of their, uh, their, their, uh, their reasons for being there. Fiduciary obligations, you know, they, they spent their money based on what they felt like that money needed to be spent on. And in a lot of cases, it's not, it's not, you know, say, all boards are this way, but we've had issues where, where they, um, where they went and purchased some of the equipment they would need, that they would buy some other op, some other things, and, and a couple years down the road, lo and behold, and now we've got to buy this, uh, we've got to replace this equipment because it's come out there. Contractual matters, uh, they got into those. Some of the districts would, they would basically secure the entire purchase of a fire truck before ever, before council was ever even notified, and this is in the past. So, uh, land acquisi, you know, land ac- acquisitions, and a lot of those, a lot of those things took place before council was even aware of it in times past, so that's something we, we need to address. By, by looking at a unified system, and that's, that's the direction we're trying to head in with the, with the emergency services board, and, uh, working with the, with the, with the fire chiefs, we look at the, the county as a whole. And we look to improve the response time by, by responding to the closest station, and we've made great strides with the, with the box alarm system. That's a great, that's been a great program for all the districts and all the firefighters and all the residents. But, you know, again, we do that in some other areas, some other, some other types of calls. And if you've got a medical call, it's, is this station closer, is this unit closer? So we can improve with technology and make sure we get the closest, the closest station responding. Unified purchasing, it helps to improve our buying power. You know, because if one station needs a, a few air packs, another station needs a few more air packs, well, if they don't communicate that, they go out and purchase them separately. And if you, you know, y'all knows what it's like, it costs breaks when you reach a certain level of, of product when you purchase, so. We can, uh, we can improve our buying power, and also improve the interoperability of standardized basic equipment. You know, there's always going to be a district that needs something special, you know. Crossville District, we're not going to be repelling all over the place in the mountain, so we don't really need high-end rescue equipment, uh, as a standard equipment. If you're in the mountain area, you may need some of those specialized equipments in that, in that respect, but, uh, we want to improve that oper, that interoperability by standardizing basic equipment. By grouping together, our regional purchases, we have a better, a better chance of qualifying for grants. We want to reach out there for those grants and try to pursue those grants, uh, to every opportunity we can. And by joining forces together, it makes it more favorable, they look, they look upon it more favorably to, to reward those, uh, to actually give those grants out to, for regional purchases. Unified operation can address specific, specific problems that affect multiple fire districts or multiple fire areas. Station placement, you know, we're getting, we're getting a lot of interest now in medical response in some rural areas. Uh, the, the emergency services board is, is working up part of their master plan to address that. To get your firefighter E M teams, your firefighter paramedics in the stations, uh, where we, we can't justify putting a, an ambulance unit there, but we can put some specialized response personnel in there. And then specialized needs based on geographic location. As special response teams, uh, you know, we've got a lot of water response equipment staged at the, the K O A Spring Station. So that's, uh, we're going to do it at geographic locations. By combining forces, we, we, we will develop a more versatile workforce, uh, that can be developed by working as a unified organization, where we all come together, we utilize, we can utilize the same personnel across fire district service lines. And this came out of something from the, uh, emergency services board. Long-term, we foresee significant, uh, significant value by unifying emergency services with a consistent response structure that will provide broader service, more cost-effective service, faster medical response times in the rural areas of the county. And that's what we're here for, is to, is to reach out to our citizens and provide them the very best possible service that we can. How do we get there? Some of our options, we maintain the current system we've got now, you can always do that. We would like to, uh, another option is to empower the current, the current emergency services board that's created by council and put in place. You can create an additional oversight board if you so choose, or establish emergency services as all the other divisions in county government. Just at the B F S or the Fire Department Sheriff's Office, or, uh, the other, all the other different county departments. The recommendation from the emergency services board and from, is endorsed by all the, the county fire chiefs at the last meeting that we had on February the nineteenth, it was, uh, put out to, for everybody's input. And this emergency services board has been working in conjunction with the, with all the county fire chiefs since our, since, since our last meetings, or the last time the, the emergency services board approached council. But to utilize the emergency, the existing emergency services board, uh, this approach was, was unanimously endorsed by the fire chiefs and the emergency services board during the joint meeting on February the nineteenth. So that, uh, recommendation was actually presented to council, uh, back in August, uh, twenty eighteen, and actually was, was taken. It did increase the, the board members by three, that next meeting, I think it was, we still had a couple of, uh, a couple of slots. And at that time, the, uh, the motion was to increase the membership to twelve, we're sitting at ten. So there's a couple of, uh, slots, I think, in the liberty council did, that's what, that was their goal, was to, to get two members from each, from each council district to serve those boards. But that is a recommendation from, again, from all the, the fire chiefs in the county and the emergency services board is to, is to give them the power to, to move, uh, to move forward and to, to create one board, one unified board for discussion instead of thirteen separate boards. Take care of, take care of this movement.
Um, last time we met, we had a discussion about this. We asked you to take the board and break it up into subcommittees and bring to us somebody working on capital budget, somebody working on lines, working on unification. We went through several specific things. Where are you on that? Because that's what we tasked you to do.
Yeah, actually, uh, the committee met, uh, Monday night, last Tuesday night, I guess it was, uh, Mr. Peters here. They actually have that board, that, that planned ready to present to county council at April Cal meet, if, if the chairman so pleases. I guess what, what we are asking you tonight to consider, this is just a consideration, is, uh, and this is endorsed by all of our fire chiefs, so we got three up here tonight, all of them. The president, uh, last week, is to consider going to one, one county fire board versus thirteen different boards. The chiefs, what I heard last, is this correct? All of our chiefs, uh, think this is the step in the right direction to a unified, unified structure, so to speak. Um, it does two or three things, it, uh, it, it puts, everybody has a seat at the table, but it puts some direction. Everybody moving in the same direction, kind of like county council, so to speak.
So, so everybody has their same identity, they're not losing that, we're not.
This year has no, there's no funding attached to what's being asked of you tonight, you don't even have to do it, this is just a consideration. This was one of the recommendations originally from the emergency services board. It was a step one at looking at something more standardized, more whatever. Uh, the, the emergency service board has met over the last eighteen months, had numerous meetings, they've actually invited all the council to be part of those meetings. Uh, they've had subcommittees, Phil is correct, they've had subcommittees which consisted of, what was it, I'm trying to remember.
Capital committee, uh, personnel, long-term planning, and they missed five.
Yeah. This year, what, what we're bringing to you tonight, though, is a, is a recommendation from the emergency services board and our fire chiefs in Pickens County, that you guys consider the first step of the plan.
Now, these subcommittees, they're, they're board members and the fire chiefs, so.
It's been a joint, a joint effort between everybody involved, from emergency services board to the fire chiefs and.
What do you do, what I heard last week, whether you do the plan or not, correct me if I'm wrong, buy into the, the, the whole funding plan or not, this year's something that you guys feel like, and you guys feel like needs to be done in order to get everybody moving in the same direction.
Well, I'm not ready to do anything to lie, no more. I mean, I was expecting to hear from these. What we asked last time, we didn't ask to this, we asked to that, you come to me with this, and I'm like, wait a minute, we hadn't digested this information because what we were looking for was that information.
Yeah, now, part of that, part of that, and I don't know if I asked you or not, but part of that is, is the committee has met, they met with, I think, all, two council members, now they've invited all of us, I don't know that. But they've actually got that information together, is that correct, Ken?
Yes.
That information is together, we, we told the chairman, um, their, their request is to add it to the April Cal log if you guys want to hear.
I, I went to one of those meetings, I listened to them.
I went to one of them, too. I, so as I understand it, this isn't, we got into the weeds when we first started this, looking at the funding. And the funding, we, because, and that goes back to before we got elected, and folks were saying, it's not fair that I pay eighty dollars for our fee over here, and I pay a hundred and sixty over here, and they pay whatever over there. What this is doing is, is solving the problem that, that we have right now with those, the individual boards. We either, we either need to keep the system we've got, as I see it, keep the system we've got, and seat these people on these individual boards so that they can work on budgets, but give them more specific direction, that's all they're supposed to be working on. We've got folks that are make, going into executive session, making personnel decisions, doing all kind of stuff, and we just got to get back to, I think we had to get back to the basics. To me, this does this, and if you've got the endorsement of all the fire chiefs to go for one, all, all they're doing is, all they're doing is, they're going to provide the, they're going to work on the budgets to present to us, which we still vote on. So nothing changes as far as their identity, as far as the fire fees, none of that changes. The funding mechanism, we're not even touching, all they're presenting is, we got one group, and we're going to look at it as a whole. And that's, 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 that's the plan.
Mr. Chair, but if I could, just one point of clarification, because I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about this. This will require a change in the ordinance, it will require three readings, a public hearing, it will, it will require all that to make it formal. But I don't think the administrator, and, and from, from the parts I've been involved in, doesn't want to proceed with trying to schedule a first reading till he knows if this is y'all's vision. If this is your long-term vision, then we can start that.
This, this is opening the, the door for conversations, what we're doing tonight.
Yeah. What other questions do you guys have?
One other thing, I'd like to research a little bit more and talk to more people on that, and understand what you're saying about people standing in, in their lane of traffic. What about the possibility of this becoming effective when we consolidate? Not necessarily now, but when it becomes consolidated, because there's no guarantee that consolidation, it's going to happen.
To, to that argument, though, is you don't have to have a consolidated fire district for this to be successful.
This could be a consolidated fire district.
But to get the proper representation from each fire department in each area, each district. Because if you look at right here, look at some of these numbers right here, in District Three, you've got fire, high fire stations. Uh, six mile, you got six mile springs. Uh, six mile, you got six miles, Springs, uh, Shady Grove, and one district. You got Liberty and their district. You got Easy, there's their district. And then we see, you got Central over there too. But, and then, and the Cross District, you got Crosswell, Dakesville. You got two. District Three is, has a lot more fire departments than some of these other districts. There's five different ones versus somewhere, it only have one or two. They need, uh, they need to have ample representation to meet their needs. And will one person represent five districts be able to cover that, or five fire stations be able to cover that on that board?
No, no. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna throw one extra.
Or two, even two, would two be able to do that properly? Get all the feedback they need for everything they need from those five stations?
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind, Wes, now, I'm not, I'm not advocating either way, but uh, the, the system you're talking about is, is a great system. I want you to know that, I really think that. But I want you to think about the system that operates your county government today, the sheriff's department. We got coverage in Holly Springs, I've got coverage in Dakesville, I got coverage, the funding mechanism and so forth. I think when you start talking about representation, you guys, you're a good example. You represent Pickens, you represent Holly Springs, you represent Pumpkin Town. There's not three of you representing them, there's, there's one of you representing them. You represent each district fairly.
Do I?
Yeah.
I do my best to, yes.
And that's where you gotta make sure, and this is where you guys have gotta hold your people accountable. If you appoint somebody to that board and they're not being held accountable, I mean, I, I think some of the reason we got where we are with the fire boards today is I'm gonna tell you what I was told day one on the job. Me and Ralph sat in the mid, I was told, you don't talk about or discuss anything if a fire department submits a budget, don't want us to do anything, you just rubber stamp it and move on. That's not right. We're talking about taxpayers' dollars. Um, I'm gonna say this tonight, you've got a group of fire chiefs that I'm proud of. Um, a year ago, I can probably see 50% of these guys are better. They would've told you, this is the worst thing in Pickens County you could ever do. You know, you know how you sell a county system? Cause you sell your people, our people are sold on this. Is that true? You know, um, our people can sell their districts, is that right, Rocky? If, if Phil tells you this is good, where's Rocky?
I believe him.
I mean, honestly, you worried about your districts, this is your district whether you know it or not. You're, you're looking at the fire districts in Pickens County right here, they can make you or they can break you. They bringing you a plan tonight that I have no vote on, I have no vested interest in. But guys, you're being offered something that you may never see again. If you don't, don't at least look at it, you're doing the public Pickens County of this service.
I, I totally agree with what you're saying. I just wasn't prepared.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, and I'm not saying I, I agree or disagree with it, but, but this isn't what I was anticipating, so okay, we wanna do this, so give us a go ahead.
Yeah, you don't even have to do this.
I'm, I'm like, let me, let me, let me talk to some people, let me get some here, go out on the street, figure out what's going on and listen. I think ultimately we're heading towards this direction.
Yeah, we've made strides.
We've made strides, but, but I'm not prepared tonight to say, say, here it is, we wanna vote on it, because I was thinking more in terms of what we had signed last time, looking at that stuff. Whereas this is part of that whole thing. I wasn't prepared tonight to, to, to say, here's what, what you're saying, we wanna go ahead and do this right now. And we may, but let me go and do my background and, 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 that's all I want, is my due diligence to make sure that that's understandable.
One of the things that, um, when I got looking at all this, I found that wasn't happening. Firefighters need to fight fire. Board members need to run the business end of it, and it don't need to be a lot of mixing. Cause you don't want board members out trying to tell firefighters how to fight fire, but you don't want firefighters dictating to the boards on business decisions. And that wasn't happening, uh, in, in the past. The other thing, and I've seen, I've seen this, when the citizens that's paying the bills for all this comes in and wants to have some input, there shouldn't be any negativity about it. Cause they're the ones paying the bills. And so, we should be looking for their input, not looking to minimize it. So, when, so when you have a board, uh, meeting and you have a bunch of citizens show up, it shouldn't be negative. I have seen that. And, uh, that's where it got me, got my dander up a little bit.
That's exactly one of the reasons I think the chiefs, the Emergency Service Board have all looked at this, I think. I think whether you guys realize it or not, and I'm not saying vote on, I agree with Trey. I do agree, I want you to know that. What I'm saying is, I think you guys see it as well. If you go back and look at the people you've appointed to the fire boards, you guys know exactly what we're talking about, it's the right thing. Cause you guys haven't been appointed because you've got those problems with the existing boards. And I'm not saying the existing boards, we got some that are, that are marvelous. Something else to keep in mind, guys, is you know it volunteers have become a thing in the past, uh, board members are volunteers. And finding volunteers is hard. It's gonna be easier to find 12 than it is 60. And you know, just because somebody's not on the board, doesn't mean they don't have a voice. I went to the Emergency Services Board, these guys here are not members of the Emergency Service Board, let me say that. But you know what, they participated. I wouldn't say it last year, I was really impressed. They participated in the meeting just like they were a member of the board. Only time they didn't participate was when they, when it come time to vote, board respect. And that's what you're looking for in a board. How do we get the existing boards? I think our existing boards have went so far this way, I don't know if we can ever pull them back here. You know, have we went past that point of return? And, and it's not the board, the, the boards that's went off track is not their fault. It's our fault because we allowed it to happen over years and years in the leg.
Mr. Chair, I'm not good, I just wanna put something in perspective here, okay? Reiterate some, some information that was shared by Chief Smith. We have 13 fire boards in Pickens County currently today, as we sit, and we have the Emergency Services Board. Of the 13 fire boards in Pickens County today, we have three functioning fire boards. Of the 13, we have three.
Legally functioning.
Legally functioning. And then we've got boards that have, we have and we haven't. I mean, two meetings, we put several people back on and this, that and the other. But then we've got fire boards that, when it was said that, or when we appointed a person to, the rest of them resigned.
I don't know.
True. So of the, the 13 fire boards that we have here in Pickens County, we have three that are functioning. That means 10 are not functioning, which the responsibility for figuring up that budget and this, that and the other, who's that fall on? Legally, who's that fall on?
The chiefs.
The chiefs. Not board members, not members of the community, it's the chief who then submits it to us either way. So truthfully, it falls on us.
That's correct.
In the end, it falls on us. Now with the three that are functioning, it still falls on us ultimately, correct?
Yeah, Phil approved it.
Correct, right, it still falls on us. I think that the apples to apples here, I wanna make sure everybody gets, is we're not talking about consolidation, we're not talking about the finances and what they're gonna look like, we're talking about the ease of overall picture. And we only have three out of the 13 actually functioning. We're doing it this year, whether we wanna admit that that's what we're doing this year, we're doing it this year whether, whether you wanna admit it or not.
Will the chiefs submit board or budgets for those?
And, and I, I, I wanna point out this too.
The chiefs have always been submitting budgets, truth be known, I mean, Rocky does budgets.
They're the ones that come up with the budgets.
Yeah, I guarantee Rocky does the budget, Phil's sitting right there beside him telling them.
I don't like to discuss budgets.
And they should be.
But to me, it is monumental, as you said, that we've got all fire chiefs going, this is a good idea. They all have a voice. So in essence, every person has a voice from every, all one of the 13 districts. I, I don't, I mean, I'm all for doing due diligence and, and waiting and doing stuff, but Trey, you had said this to me, um, a year ago. This is, this has been something that you wanted to work on since you got here.
And I'm not saying...
And, and I know, I know we wanna do it right, and I, I agree with you on all that, but to me, as we go into the budgeting process...
Give me a month to go talk.
Well, we've got three months before you can do anything.
Right.
And, and so this budget cycle, it's, it's on us. I mean, the, the boards don't make, those 10 boards, if we set them today, wouldn't have time.
Well, it's being done by the chiefs, which they have been doing, really, that's kinda what's been happening for years anyway.
Let me ask you this.
The question is, who do you want to do the budget? That's all the ordinance does, it tells you who does the budget.
Let me ask you this, this is gonna take three meetings and we're three months out. Do we go ahead and start the process? We can stop it at any time we want?
Well, there's, you know, um, if y'all wanna start the process...
And that gives you, that gives you in essence, three months to say if I don't yay or nay on it.
I'd just like to, I know y'all submitted and say, are all 13 fire chiefs here? All? They're not all?
We actually had all of them present last week with the exception of Chief McLean and Chief...
And that's the thing is...
Yeah, and actually, I want you to talk to them all. I was hoping all of them to make it tonight. Last Tuesday night, if I'm not mistaken, we had Chief McLean, it was his birthday, and we had Chief Walton, who actually, he has, he's a part-time chief, he worked, that was on too, wasn't present. I hadn't asked Chief McLean, where do you stand on it?
I stand firmly on what we're trying to do.
And you talked to Chief Walton as well. And he is...
He's, he's behind you 100%.
And I'm not saying we need to do this or that. Trust me, I, I'm not saying that. We just wanted to kinda bring this to you.
And I, I think we're going down the right path. Just like I said, tonight, it's like, I wasn't prepared for this to come tonight. It's like, it's like, there was nothing, it's like, here it is, and it's like, whoa, I'm not, I like to...
They have requested next month, if you guys have time, they do wanna present, is that correct, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
They want to present to you next month, if you've got time in the Cal.
Is that all with us?
Yeah, they wanna come before the committee, the whole next month and present the, the, the entire ball of wax, so to speak.
But that'd be basically the same plan that we saw.
Actually, it's not, not quite as strong as what you saw. They actually, uh, last week, whenever they voted...
We wanted to talk about lines, talk about how we're holding the identity of these fire boards together, how we're looking at long-term budgeting, how we're looking at personnel issues. There were several different categories, and I remember all of them, that are basically, rather than throwing that all in one group, let subcommittees work on them, divide up the load and think through it.
We were working on that.
And that's, that's kinda what we were looking for.
Yeah, I think they actually, if I'm, I'm speaking to the board, cause I, actually, I backed out of this. I learned a long time ago, let people do their work, coming on the backside and listening to it. But from what I understand, is this what they did, or Phil, you will see. How'd y'all do the...
Yes, they, uh, they allowed each chief to put in a request for with it, whatever committee they wanted to be on, and then the chair came to the chiefs with a couple of board members. And that's how all the committee worked. They've done a ton of work, too.
I was kinda impressed, the plan they'd come up with last week when they met, they said, you know, it's a little strong. They backed, they actually backed down off what they actually come up with a little bit last week.
I'd kinda like to see all that, talk about all this and all that, get the mix and go from there.
My, my only thing is, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds. I think it's a, it's a baby step process in order to make this happen. I don't wanna get into the funding portion of it.
One of the things we're gonna ask you guys, regardless of what you do with that, consider this.
And, and that's what, one of the things, I think we're trying to mix, and, and I, I think we're trying to make them the same, and they're totally two different subjects. And that's, that's the thing I'm truly wanna iterate, is we're talking apples and oranges. That plan that you're talking about with the committees and this, that and the other, that's a bushel of, of oranges. And this is, is apples and it, they're totally different. You can have one without the other, but you understand what I'm saying? Do you follow what I mean?
I, I guess, I guess my point of this is that I've got several rural fire districts. You've got a city that's not part of the program, nothing against that.
I have rural, I have rural there.
But, but I know, I've been playing this, been in this for a while, I wanna talk to people and say, okay, make sure, because one of the things to make this work, you gotta have everyone bought on. And I know how groupthink can sometimes go, where everyone kinda goes down there, but back there may be a grumbling, and it doesn't mean we can't fix that grumbling, but we need to be aware of, if you, when we do this whole thing, and we've talked about this as a council, is getting everyone on board. And you're saying everyone's on board, and I think that's great. I wanna go do that, my, my due diligence that I owe to my constituents and, and to those fire boards and everything else, and say, here, here's what we're, what's being put out there. And I wanna be able to have that information. And doesn't necessarily, I'm gonna agree with them, then they say, you know, we're not in favor of it, doesn't mean I'm not gonna be in favor of it. But I wanna know where people are standing when I'm making that decision. Because ultimately, that falls on our shoulders.
I agree.
And, and, and this is a big shift. And I don't think it's one that we're not necessarily should or shouldn't take, but I wanna do that with a little bit more time to digest than the...
Well, and to your point, when we first started, you, you said, and, and I agree with you 100% on this, I don't want, if, if they're not, if, if we've got, if we've got a, a group that are out there grumbling, that are, one group can really stir up the pot a lot faster than anybody else. If it's not a good idea, I don't wanna be a part of it. And the only way, only people I can refer to are these guys, cause that's not my specialty. Right? I mean, but I, I, I can see it from a business standpoint, exactly what you're talking about is why it's good just on the top level as far as consolidation, not on the, not on the funding and where we're going and how we do all that, but on the top level, this makes a lot of sense to me and gives a lot of control and identity to each of those districts while still giving, you're still sending us the budgets to approve. So I, I'm gonna ask a question again, do we start, do we take it out of committee to where I think we can begin the three months of readings, or do you wanna wait on that?
I'd like to research it first and then...
So you wanna wait longer than three months?
So, no, 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 research it, give me a month, and come back next Cal, and then make that decision.
So four, so we're four months out now? It's gonna take, I, I'm, I'm only playing devil's advocate on this, is it gonna take you four months to go talk to these people?
No, 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 I wanna, I wanna go down here, I would personally like to have one month.
It's gonna be like this, if we know we're gonna do it, then the three months could be boom, boom, boom. But I don't wanna start and come back and then all hell breaks loose. What the hell? Without having, saying, here, I know what, here's what's going on, but we were gonna start it and stop it, I wanna know, basically have the ducks in a row, so the three months is a formality.
Well, okay, I, then, then, then I'll agree with you guys. The only thing I will ask is that when these guys meet and they want you to be there, go talk to them.
That's not what this is about.
But that was part of what this is about.
Well, this is the first time I've been presented...
But they've talked about it at those other meetings. What I'm saying is, please make yourself available to them.
Yeah, yeah, but to say tonight, okay, we're gonna, we want you to vote on this, to pull this and make this motion.
What I'm saying is, Carl and I, we've heard this for a couple of months now already, cause we went to some of the meetings.
And I've heard it.
Right.
And I went to the meeting, I was invited to.
So my point is, if you're not gonna go to the meetings, don't say, well, I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to chastise you in public, I'm just saying...
Maybe I was involved with something else when those meetings were going on.
In the evening?
Yes.
Anyway.
We made a name for ourselves, we appreciate you guys.
Listen, guys, great work, Scott, thank you guys so much.
I, I sat through the, the, but you, we took the first county, the first committee to hold meeting, and that was one of the most painful things I've ever sat through. From all the hours that we put into this thing for 18 months, if Pickens County had paid for those 18 months, the county council would've taken it and run with it and said, thank you very much, money well spent. But since it's become, it was all volunteer times, uh, it's coming back to us that, you know, we don't have your, your support for all the work we've done. And I've been in public service for over 30 years in Pickens County. I've been with two fire departments, two rescue squads, EMS and even did, uh, Times and I don't want dispatcher. And this is the best conglomeration of those services that I've ever seen. And this is the best conglomeration of those services that I've ever seen. I've, I've been in meetings where this guy was a mad attack guy, and they ain't no way in the world that it wouldn't, it wouldn't work together. But with the season that we're in right now, it is, it's the best it's ever been. And if, if you will come and hear the, the stuff that we put together, it's all for the betterment of this county. It's, it's good stuff. And...
Well, Ken, I just want to say, appreciate all the work that's been done. And George, you and I have known each other a long time. Probably don't have to say that.
Too long.
But, but I appreciate it, and I, I relate that to some of the other board members. And, and I know you put a lot of work in. I really appreciate it.
And, and we know that this, this is not going to be the end-all, be-all to all things. Do we have all the answers for the three years, the five years, the 10-year down the road? No. This county's going to change. Money flow's going to change. Your seats are going to become open. Somebody else is going to fill it. But if we'd had these conversations 25 years ago, when people were upset because somebody else was coming to play it in their sandbox, if we could have got past all that stuff, like we've done in the past 18 months, imagine where this county would be now.
Well, I will say this, regardless of whatever happens, you guys have, I think, forged a relationship between all of you that are going to make the county a better place. So, thank you.
That's what we're all after.
At, at the, at the end of the day, if nothing happens, the very, the very least of this is that you've done something extraordinary by bringing everybody together. So thank you for that.
I don't think I've ever said that before.
From our first meeting till now, I think we've made great strides, and I appreciate each one of you.
Any other discussion on this item?
I kind of hate to see us not know yet. Strike while the iron's hot. But I understand these guys have concerns.
All right, we'll move on to log number 96.
Okay, number 96. We are recommending that, since our 150-year celebration is coming to an end, we remove this item from the county law, council pleases.
Make a motion, we take this off the county law.
I'm saying.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, see if I raise your hand.
We do have one more event, right? Mark was saying, how's that going to go? Will y'all be able to elaborate on this?
Yes, sir. I can actually bring Jay to the council meeting on the 410. It's actually coming along. Oakdale County has pulled out. I guess y'all guys know that. We're going to be having it, due to the cost of Clemson and all, it's going to be at the Liberty High School Stadium. The reason Liberty was chosen, the school district, Liberty's going to be a venue that can, the stadium is a venue, know the people. But due to the turf at Liberty versus the grass, sod at the other stadiums, the school district recommended we use Liberty versus Pickens or Easly. So, just so you guys know why that was chosen, they feel like it's going to be less chance of damage with 300 kids on the field and chairs.
Pray for good weather.
We pray for good weather. We have a backup plan. If the weather does turn, we'll do two shows at the, Easly has the largest high school auditorium. There'll be two shows at the Easly High School Auditorium if weather's bad. That's our backup plan there. But the shows, the show will go on regardless of what happens.
Any other questions?
Another budget.
Okay, so let me make sure, motion to take it off the committee of the whole log. All those in favor, see if I raise your hand. And that's off. Log number 94.
Yes, sir. This was completed by council some months back. We recommend this be taken off the log as well. This is an admission of implementation of the new federal guidelines relating to grants. Ralph King presented to you guys. You guys approved it already. We just recommend cleaning the log up and removing it.
Motion to, the motion by Mr. Feenster, second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify raising your hand. And that's off. Log number 104.
104 is Green Crescent Trail. They came to brief council. I want to say, six months ago, this one here is complete as well. We recommend removing it from the log as well.
To Green Crescent.
They came to want to come brief you on the trail, what was going on. They come, done a presentation. It was just an update on what they were doing.
Is that different from what we heard about today?
No, 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 different. That, you're talking about the SWU?
Southern Wesley.
Yeah, that's different. This was, this was, yeah, that's something.
You're talking about connecting with this one or what?
I can give you an update. I talked to town central after the meeting. They would be liking it.
Motion.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify raising your hand. And that's off the log. Log number 112.
Rear drive. Well, we talked about this last month. This is Tim with Senate's letter. We've actually, Chris has been in touch with him. I think there were some things that happened. The planning commission kind of helped him a little bit, so he's, he's not blocked access. This is one of those situations that really, unfortunately, the county has no jurisdiction. Recommend removal from the log.
They did give him some relief from, the planning commission required that easement to be provided.
That is correct.
Did that easement get provided?
It did. Yes, sir. Chris texted me, said it was all complete. He was sick, or he would have been here tonight. Chris said it was done. Recommend.
Motion by Councilman Hudson.
Sir.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify raising your hands. And that's removed. Log number 88, recreation funding request.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you requested last week that we get council a list of the expenditure for five years. I think there's a list at everybody's desk here, all recreation expenditures for the last five years. You want to kind of look at it. With that being said.
The only reason that I asked that, I, I just wanted to bring, let y'all start looking at this and start thinking about it. When, I know y'all have seen the, the requests that have come through on recreation funding, and we hear from Ralph every year that says, he says, you've got a one-time expenditure of $50,000 per district, and we do it one time every time. Right? So, and I know that some of the requests have asked for light bulbs or for whatever weird thing. We've made great strides getting us to where we are now. I do know that in some districts, we spend a lot more than the $50,000, because it's not even a part of that allocation. Do we need to try to look at this based on what it was, I mean, what's the intent? I, that's what I'm asking you guys. Not, not, not based on what I want to do, but what do y'all want to do as far as, when you use, when you talk about recreation, what do you believe the intent is for us to use that funding for? Because some of the requests I'm seeing are, like I say, all over the place. And some, I mean, I, I just, I think, I think it might better serve council if we have specific guidelines of what that recreation funding is for.
I think our guidelines were originally set up, were just to be capital. We weren't going to be funding so much the operations and stuff. It was to help offset some of the capital expenses.
There was a time when that was the policy. I remember that, too.
And that's, and that's kind of what I've always tried to push towards. If they need a new building or a new thing here, that it's a matter of just having the funds.
Because you're doing a one-time funding.
Because they, they take their, their money in for their, for their fees, to pay for their operations.
Over than that, even, because there was a point where it became, prior to that, it was to offset registration fees. It's kind of a process, too. So it's kind of, you know, it's.
But I've always, what I can't, it's like, you need to keep it more on, on capital stuff, because that's the stuff you need help. If you happen to use recreation funds to run your, your operations, then your, your, your budget's not right. This is to help offset. It's been used, in my case, a lot of times for emergency situations. Say, if a flood or something gets knocked out, like, you know, our budget's gone.
Yeah.
But we got a, we got a situation. You know, we had an engine blow up on a lawnmower. You know, it's $3,000 spendable for City of Six Mile. That's a huge deal.
Yeah.
You know? And so that's how I've kind of been, has looked at stuff. Now, we've got a little different with the board now, so maybe it's us directing that board more towards the capital side.
I, I agree.
So some of the recreational work that they want to, just, just does it mean that you have to prove it? Because you're going to get where you're going.
No, I agree. But what I'm, what I'm getting at is, what are our, what are, what's the pleasure of this council's guidelines? What are, what are, how are we going to look at recreation going forward?
Did you look at that thing from Representative Hyatt with the par? Yeah.
Yes, I did. The par, par grants? See, that's, that's something completely different. That's, they use some of the, those funds for the Pagan Mills.
Yeah, requirements for what it, what it goes for.
Yeah, absolutely. It's got, it's got specific, specific things on how it can be used.
Could you see any of that that could be possibly applicable to us?
Yeah, I mean, just in the, in the sense of, of a structure of it. But I want to be careful that we don't do it just like theirs, because that's kind of two different things.
Whatever it looks like, it needs to be done right.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I agree with you on that. I, well, I guess, I guess where I'm going is, so I, my belief was that originally, it was set up because you've got people in the county that pay more than people in the city, because people in the city pay taxes, and people in the county don't pay taxes. They're paying taxes for that benefit of that rec department. But the people in county are not paying taxes for that. So it's to help offset those costs. And then it became, no, we need to be more on capital. Let's make sure that we're doing those things the one time, you know, not, not every year kind of thing. But this has happened, and we need to fix that lawnmower. We need to fix that whatever. So that makes sense. But then that's still, what is it that we want to do? And there's some districts that you guys have been very blessed and fortunate. You don't get to use a lot of yours, because the city of Clemson is able to, to offset a lot of those costs.
Yeah, they do most of the cost. In fact, first few years that I was on council, a very few requests, in fact, I think $25,000 for the first couple of years, went to Southern Wesleyan for their tennis area, because they said that anybody in the county could use it.
Right. Well, and there's, there's another great point. So if I go out at the track at Southern Wesleyan, walk around with my family, I'm using that, and it's in another district. Or if I go onto the, the doodle trail, and I go take the kids up at the park at the front, or the park that you put in at the other end, we're using it. So I mean, are we looking at things that, that benefit the county as a whole? Are we looking at things just for our district? You know, what I don't want us to do is, is to, that become a, a perception of, well, in my district, I'm going to pick winners and losers like you talk about.
Well, I think what's going to ultimately happen is, you know, we've got a lot, and we've had people come to the county and request a county to do recreation, you know? And I, I don't think we, it used to be, when I grew up and you grew up, recreation provided by the YMCA.
True.
Okay? And, and that's where we went. We went to the Y bar in Clemson, and, and there was one in Seneca. And what happened is, is these municipalities got the recreation business, and have run a lot of the Y's out of business. The government has gotten in the job of recreation. And, and unfortunately, that's where we are. I don't want to create more government competition for a set number of people.
Okay.
But what I see happening is that some of these smaller places that are struggling, that they're going to have to come up with some sort of a, a partnership to make this work, because you've got areas like Clemson that are flush with money, because they have a huge tax base. You've got a place like Six Mile that put together a huge program, and they have very little tax base. It's a huge part of their budget for their whole city is recreation. Whereas Clemson, the budget is, the recreation budget is nothing. You know, so, but these guys struggle to operate, you know? But yet, they're providing service to those kids. So there's somewhere in the, in, in, we're helping to offset some of those costs. Whereas Clemson doesn't need the offset cost.
Not always. That's not always true. That gym that they're wanting to.
Well, that's a big, a big project.
There's a big project coming up. Yeah, I saw that.
But that's something that these other cities couldn't even dream about, adding another gym.
What about recreation for adults? Because all I can picture is Wes out on a kayak right now. But you do that. But, I mean, you do that. You also ride the doodle trail.
We gave some of those bikers that did the, looked back, the off-road biking, because they were cleaning up trails.
I think what it comes down to is determining, do we want this to be a capital fund? First off, do we want to figure out a way to fund it, and actually fund it, and not be a one time every year? Do we want this to be a capital fund that we support our communities with, whether it be, if my fiscal, where I live, community, but the county as a whole communities with? Or do we really care about recreation? Because then when you define recreation, I think a lot of times, we think recreation, to your point, is organized sports. When you think about rec, it's organized, you always think football fields, soccer fields, basketball courts. That's where we spend our money, right? When we, when we're supporting our rec departments. It's either for a lawnmower to cut the grass, or for lights to go up, or for a new school board, or for a basketball floor in the gym, or whatever. So to me, that's not recreation. Recreation is anything to get you outside or get you moving. It is a passive. It doesn't have to be an active. So we have to decide, are we concerned about recreation, or are we concerned about supporting capital expenditures in our communities? And I think until we can decide that, we can't go any further, because, you know, you've always went along the, the thoughts of, it's capital, needs to be capital. Where we've had operations in the Dakersville community, or we've had programs like swim lessons in the Pickens community, you see what I'm saying? So until we get on the same page of what the money actually needs to be spent for, and whether or not we actually want to fund the money continually, I think any other conversation's mute.
Well, I think that we've set, good or bad, for people to spend on that money now.
That's another, that's another point.
And that's where we, we run into that, you know, whether, whether we've done it, you know, good or bad, there are people that, that in certain communities, that depend on that to make their thing work. In other words, they need, they need for capital expenditures. You know, like, say, it's like, in Six Mile, if that lawnmower goes, and it's, and it's $4,000, they're done. So that, now you say, well, now their rec program can't operate, because now they got, they can't, or they have to put their fees up so high, because they can't. And this is where I'm saying, at some point, some of these places are going to have to start working.
They're going to have to take care of their own.
Well, it's not going to be, they can't take care of their own. That's the problem. It's there's not enough funding for certain groups to be able to survive on. They're going to have to figure out how to work together. And they're, and I.
Well, either, either, either we're going to continue to fund it, and at some point in time, it's going to cause a tax increase to be able to fund it. I mean, let's just be honest about it. Either we're going to have to pass a countywide tax increase to fund it, or the communities that need it have to come up with a way to fund it.
And, and that's what I'm saying, is we've created communities that are dependent on it.
You know, we talked about the $12,000 that went on utilities in Six Mile, and $80,000 in Dakersville. You know, Six Mile couldn't raise taxes enough.
Right.
I think the value was $2,600, so.
And see, now, we've got a situation where those are county properties. Okay? Now, we got a, a county property that we're leasing for a dollar that we're going to fix the roof on.
Yeah, right.
So, where's the consistency there?
We've got to get.
That's, that's, that's part of the reason for my question is, because I, when I'm looking back through this, and we're paying for dish network, not now, we did a long time ago.
Well, fuel for something.
We bought sinks. We bought, I'm just talking about my district. I mean, I don't.
Compared to what we had last year with that commission we had.
No, no, no. I, I'm saying we're light years ahead of where we were. But, but where, what I'm getting at is, maybe we need to separate these two things out. Maybe we need to separate out what we've already, we're locked in. We're locked into, to paying for these utilities and whatever.
They can't survive without.
Right. So does that need to be, because we're going into the budget process. My question is, do those things need to be, let's take those off the table. Gerald, you're going to have to work that into the budget, because it's going to be there from now on till eternity. Amen. And then, now let's take a look at, what, what are we doing for recreation funding? And how do we want to define that? I don't, in other words, can you separate those things out, and then identify, as a council, what do we want to provide those guidelines? Does that make sense? I mean, how do y'all feel about?
Maybe it's something where we, we're just talking out loud.
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, it's, this is.
Bring in these recreation departments. You know, we've never actually brought the guys in and said, tell us where you are, what your needs are. Do we have a place, how some of y'all, because you're going to find out, these guys operate totally different.
How many recreation departments are there?
50 up top.
So, to, to that point, should we just cut a check to every rec department and us get out of the mix?
But, but I think it may be worth the conversation to find out, because I think some of these guys, they're, they're, I don't know how much they cross communicate. It may be some of these things, I like, like, for example, you know, Central Clemson is looking at this gym. Well, they got a group that was the cat group, which was the pool people, that had the, they were using Fight Field House. There's a, there's a group out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know. I remember.
And they got kicked out of Fight Field House. So now they want to, they want to build a swimming pool. You know? And so they're coming to us, or some of the people saying, well, now, is that, now you're going to have a pool, competing against a pool. Neither one of them will, will succeed. Because one, you know, so is there a way they can work together? And in that sense, is it something where we start looking more about some of these rec departments?
Actually, that's a great point. That was my, because when you start thinking about the track at SWU, when you start thinking about those things that, that the county enjoys as a whole, I, I don't, I don't know what that looks like.
I'm just in the rec business.
No, I don't.
Let me, let me say a word on the pool. The pool at Clemson Central is not anywhere a year big enough to do Olympic-style.
It can't. But if they go make a pool, they'll take business away from Clemson, and they won't have enough. They've got 40 families in that whole deal. How they going to build a multimillion-dollar pool? I, I don't know how that works. But, but if, if you can have a way where Clemson can have the pool and the other pool together, then you've got something, maybe they can work together, is what I'm saying here.
And I know we've got a rec board in place to kind of vet all these things before they send, they're sending us everything, so that you see it, regardless of what they recommend. I just wanted, I, I just thought that we needed to begin, begin the process of having a conversation. Maybe you guys go back to, to your districts and go, look, what is, what is this, what is, what do we want this to look like? What do we, and, and do we agree that we probably need to stop sweeping the utility stuff under the rug, and just say, And just say, you know, guys, we're, we've been placed in this situation to fund this, we're gonna fund it. So let's just go ahead and say that that's part of the budget.
One of the things that I went back and, uh, we started this process and I, and I walked through the facilities and talked to all the people that use the facilities in Dacresville. And I cut off a lot of systems that were running. And so I've got them all on board as far as a mindset of conserving. So we should see a big reduction. The problem is, and I think it's, it's all been done with good intentions. But when you put infrastructure in place and, and county bought this school in Dacresville a long time ago and it's being used and it's a, it's a good thing. But when you put that, when you buy that, that's just the first step. Then it has to be maintained from now on. We've got a, a sports complex in Dacresville. Just got, uh, three baseball fields, a locker field, tennis courts, I mean.
That the county owns.
That the county owns.
It's a rec business whether we wanna admit it or not.
We own, we own rec.
So my, I guess my point is this, um, your point on how do we wanna fund it? Do we wanna fund it? At this point, where you, if you don't, you walk away from it.
No, I, I, I'm not saying, I, I'm not, I don't think that we should walk away from Dacresville at all. What I'm saying is, do we separate that out of our recreation discussions and go?
This is county property.
This is county property, we gotta pay for it, put it in the budget.
That's what we've been doing.
Right, but we haven't, we've been quietly.
I wish we could make it, where we're pacing for itself.
Is it, is it, is it possible, then? I mean, just throw an idea out there.
Yeah.
Bring all the rec departments in.
I, I'm not opposed to.
And, and maybe just hear what they have to say. I mean, I don't know, I don't, maybe open a can of worms they don't wanna open up, I don't know. And, and I'm not saying we do it.
Open a can of worms.
Um, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to walk into a land.
Well, no, not, you, I don't think you are asking for them to talk.
But then to that point, while I understand what you're saying, to that point, are we saying, are those the only people we're gonna consider for rec funds?
Understanding, but, but that's the elephant in the room, as you so often say, is those rec departments functioning and operating? Because no matter what we look at, ninety percent of our money is going to that. Cause that's where the recreation is, the kids.
Bigger than that, guys, what you gotta think about is your state mandate functions. Your shares department, your EMS, your emergency management. I mean, what Chris is saying is, is a good point. Yeah, we always put them in the budget. But guys, if we keep putting this stuff in the budget, I hope you know you guys are setting yourself up for a tax increase or something. Just, just so you know that, I mean, I can only do so much with what comes in. There will come a point in time if we're spending ninety thousand dollars on a building a year, twelve thousand on a field. And I'm not saying cut them out right now, you can't cut them out and drop them off. But do we start looking at, 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 at a plan in the future where as we see daylight, you know, do we start?
Where somebody could take a.
A five-year plan to get them, get them to where as they become, or self-supporting.
Well, so we got more, like having our five boards, you have all these separate little athletic programs going around with, with managers and stuff like that, does it make sense? Not that we wanna do it, but.
Kinda like you did, you created one, one recreation board that kinda brings this information together for you and brings it back to you, kinda like, you know, what, you know, funnel information through one channel, bring it back to you guys. So I think your rec board is actually meeting with your individual rec departments as we, as we speak right now about the request.
Last year, there was not a wonderful job that they did, they did a outstanding job.
This is good, now the question becomes, what is, what's, what's your definition of rec? Is it capital? If it's capital, do we still pay utilities? Is it personnel? If it's personnel, do we pay for capital? I think what, what y'all trying to get to is what is the, the vision? You know, if you really want to supply services for the kids? I mean, there's all kinds of things out there. There's a Mobi rec program, I don't know if you've seen anything about that or not.
I actually brought some information on that, yeah.
There's some, you know, there's different things out there.
Why don't you look at the, the, the World Series? You know, we've taken monies towards that out of rep funds, you know? Um, so that is a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing and so I, I.
And I think this is all good, but where I told Roy we are right now, I mean, you guys give us a list of priorities and go through that list of priorities, I've got to fund the shares department, I've got to fund the EMS. These things we've got to do.
But if, if some things we don't take care of on, on one end, we'll pay for on the other. With the rec funds, keeping the kids active and stuff like that, we can't afford for Dacresville not to lose rec. We look at the doodle trail while this doing, look at easily, I don't know if I can see you guys out there on the trail, but, I mean, look at it. It's not a secret anymore. And when Pickens finish gets done on their end, look out, look out on it.
And then easy to go for building their capital buildings.
But those things are happening now as far as saving all down the road with other things that we have to fund.
I agree with you a hundred percent, I agree a hundred percent. But the question becomes, I mean, and this is just a question to think about when you start talking about the budget. You know, do you progress, what I'm gonna recommend this year we do with rec and everything else is we start segregating some of these things out here on your tax notice. Let's let the people know what they're paying for. You got a line item for rec, you got a line item for tourism and whatever and so forth and so on. Kinda like you talked, you remember how they done the sewer bill, which I hate the way it's called, it's not even a sewer bill, people don't understand that. But we need to start putting things out there where it's public, that's.
We were gonna put a line item on that, some tax bill for the, for the lawyer fee, said for a while.
But see, if the public knows and they don't mind, it's great, man. But there's gonna come a point in time, let's face it, you haven't raised taxes in fifteen years. If you keep adding services, you're not gonna raise taxes, you're gonna have to cut something. Honestly, this is low-hanging fruit right now, I hate to say that.
To, to your point though, like what Wes is saying, cause I agree with you, that, um, we'll take care of the kids and we'll solve a problem on the other side of, of, of people getting in trouble. Cause they're into sports and they do, they take care of that. We have been funding recreation without putting it in the budget, but we wind up putting it in the budget and figuring out a way to get it paid for. And we've been very fortunate for a long time. I, I don't wanna get rid of anything that we're doing at all. What I wanna do is give a better definition so that the public understands and that we're pretty transparent on how we're spending the money. Um, because we have it allocated now to where there's fifty thousand dollars a district. And, you know, we, we look at, we, the rec department sends, the rec department, the rec board sends us that information and we talk about it and we get, we get pretty nitpicky with it and I'm glad, I'm really proud of what we did this, over the past two years. But I was looking at this stuff and I'm going, what has been, what has been the intent? What's, what's the, or if we don't wanna look at what the intent was five, ten years ago, what is our intent? What, what, where do we see what we do with recreation and how that's funded? And we have to make choices on that.
Well, if you, I mean, the question nobody wants to throw out there.
Yeah.
Is it our responsibility?
Well.
Is that our main bit? Now, people will shoot me in the head because people are so dependent on it. But the bottom line is, what is our responsibility as government? And, and is it better to try, this goes back to having the reps that are out there start figuring out how to work together and, and pull us out of the equation.
And funding it themselves.
And, and, and start saying, because it's not really, but you know, but we've created this over many years where these things have built up and they're servicing hundreds of kids and they are totally dependent on having some money come from the county.
You know, half of Six Mile I'm not doing, half of Dacresville I'm not doing.
They could.
They, they could, you're right.
So I mean, that, that's a, that's a, that's a, a ballbuster, to be honest with you. But, but maybe it's start, to start looking, okay, is there, and that's a huge part of their budget. Well, maybe if there's a way they could consolidate for somebody else to partnership, it wouldn't be quite as much of a burden. I don't know if they wanna do that or not.
And, and to your point, I agree with you a hundred percent and that's where I'm at. Especially with, with some of this capital type stuff, it's, it's really not necessarily our place to do some of these things. Now, how would they do it without us? I don't know, because we've enabled them for years and years and years and years. We created that monster.
We have, we have.
And, and we're paying for the sins of our forefathers. I mean, that's the way the world works, right? But Councilman Hendricks' point, at some point, there are certain things that we're responsible for. And if you don't take care of childhood obesity, if you don't get people active, if you don't have a healthy community, we're gonna pay for it on the back end. So there, there are, so there is a balance in there somewhere, but where's that balance? Is it in, is it in helping with capital for projects? Or is it in starting or, or funding certain things throughout the county? Is it, is it helping one area or should we focus on every, that's, that's the question, that's maybe another question.
So, so to the, the intent on Dacresville, let's take that for example. They built all these things out there. I'm sure they didn't build them as a county thinking, great, we built it now, we're gonna keep throwing money at it and let it, it, it'll just become a, a, you know, money-sucking machine. The, I got, my thought would be the intent was, we're gonna help see this and it's gonna become self-sustaining, to your point of, um, where we're not really in the recreation business, but we can see that it's gonna help the communities, it's gonna help the public. So we'll start this program and then it'd be, but it never happened because they never got past the, we started it and then they just kept coming back every, every year with, well, we need to keep paying for this.
Well, so what you're, you're going into is just the, the overhead cost for lighting on all of these.
Right.
Even though the county's built on the county owns, you know, when you look at a, a community with eight hundred residents total, what kind of tax base are you gonna generate from that? You know, where you got easily with I don't know how many thousands of people, you know? Even Central combined with Clemson to form a Central Clemson rec because Central couldn't do it on its own. And they came up to a partnership and they made it work because they expanded their tax base. But when you look at Dacresville or Six Mile, well, they wanna service kids because they're pretty far out there and parents don't wanna drive.
Twenty-five, thirty minutes, yeah.
You know, and so, but, but they're such a small tax base. I mean, literally, it's probably half or three-quarters of their budget.
What you're saying is that, that needs are different in different parts of the county.
Well, it, well.
But is it our job to subsidize it all?
And that, and there becomes that.
But if we, but if we subsidize each district, which, uh, normally about the same number of people, we're, we're spreading it very well equally.
Which brings up my question, do we just start cutting the check to each district? And get out of the game altogether?
Well, that gets us out of the game of, of picking who's winners and losers on, it just got the check, but it doesn't get us out of the budgetary situation where we're looking.
Which was my first question.
Where's, where's the, in, in, in game of this, is it our responsibility?
Which was my first question.
I'm getting an ice cream headache.
You know, and so, so it, do we, do we, do we have an open discussion with all the recreation?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Needs, wants and needs and where they are and just say, here's, here's where we are as a county.
I think if you're gonna do that, though, I think you need to, we've had.
And I say that fearfully.
Yeah, well, I, I think if you're gonna do that, you've also gotta open up the conversations with those entities like the, the group from Clemson that brought it, that became, that was a combination of tax. But it was rolling, it was all that student stuff.
That was all, that was, that was using PAT or the, the.
ATAX.
ATAX because of hotel.
That's why we see, you see, you see where I'm getting confused.
Because it could stay out of that, cause no, nobody in Dickens County reaches that.
But, but you see where I'm, I'm getting confused? Because the ATAX definition and the rec definition began to cross lanes a little bit when you kind of talk about the capital.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Boat docks.
We have, we have.
When you look at what it was done in the past.
The boat docks aren't used by people in Dickens County. They're used by those schools that come and pay the, the hotel with the ATAX. Cause they're coming down here from Massachusetts for a week.
But people in Dickens County can use them.
I don't know that they're even.
Or let's take the, we saw this presentation at SWU today about the mountain biking trail.
SWU's a better example where they use it as an ATAX money, but they open it up to the county.
Yeah.
But they bring in events.
And that's what, and that's what they're talking about, uh, with this, this organization that's doing, um, they're, they're creating a bike trail. They've already got a hundred and fifty families that are involved. They, uh, bring, they go to events in other states where there's eight hundred to, to three thousand people that come. But it's all recreation, it's all built on families biking together. And that's what Dr. Boss was talking about today.
He's a great salesman, isn't he? He's a great salesman, isn't he?
Yeah, he would, yes, he is. But I mean, I, I've actually heard from this from other, other people too. But I think, do we talk to those folks too? Do we talk to about this, whatever program you're talking about? Um, I don't know what this, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what the.
What's the, what's the original ordinance way back when, where's it at?
Original ordinance, uh, well, it actually was the budget ordinance is the way it originally started. They just allocated one mill for, for recreation.
And what happened is it originally started out with a lump sum of money that the council voted on how to spend. And what happened is that you had, this is before I came on board. You had council people grouping up to form voting blocks to take money and stick it over here.
Yeah, to.
And so that was, they would do. After that, they developed a system where it was one-six, one-six, one-six.
Right.
And that was a big change.
And that made it fair. And that, and that had just started when I.
I think you're right.
Came on board, if they'd done that the year before because they'd had all the problems. Then we were given this money that they would request through their council person. And then that's when I was told this is capital. And so I've always made them submit to me a capital expense of what you want. And then it got approved by council because the council, I think, still voted on it. But it was, the request would go to them for whatever.
So where did the mill go?
Over time, it quit, it stopped being coupled to a mill.
It just got to three, just fifty thousand per day.
At the time that it was originally set around, it was, or set out.
We don't wanna put too much.
Because budgetary, budgetary restraints when we hit that recession.
Two thousand eight.
We lost, we lost so much dag on revenue out of the cliffs, we, it was, everything just went chomp. So we were like, okay, we were at fifty thousand, that's where we kept it.
Kinda like the local government, I was gonna say we put, we put a level, the government, we never put it back to the mill?
Guys, you know where you are really and truly right now, if you, whether you know it or not? You at roughly eight-tenths of a mill right now.
Yeah, we're pretty close.
You're pretty close and the reason I say that, you got three hundred thousand dollars recreation funding, plus your eighty-nine thousand at Dacresville, plus your twelve, thirteen thousand at Six Mile brings you up. That takes you up to the four hundred thousand mark. But the mill's right at five hundred thousand, so you're at eight-tenths of a mill anyways, whether you know it or not. Even though they cut it back, they creeped it up without telling anybody, they creeped it up with their utilities and buildings and things like that.
So I still go back, I mean, I, I, we're going around the circle, I don't mean to do that.
What's the purpose?
What's, what is, what is, what is the wish of council as a whole? How do we wanna define it? And to your point, I think it's not a bad idea to tiptoe down this hall of talking to, how do you, how do people in the community see this working?
But I think the worst thing we could do is make decisions without public.
I, I agree, no, I don't wanna do that. But, um, so with y'all's permission, I'd like to keep this on the log for next meeting and then perhaps get some of those folks to come talk to us.
When are we supposed to, excuse me, when are we supposed to hear from the rec board?
Um, they, they're meeting now, so.
They are meeting. Normally it's somewhere in April, May area.
Do we wanna switch rules in the game?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting long-term.
For the following year.
I'm trying, I'm trying to think, ten years from now, when, when you and I are sitting on the front porch, now you'll sit with me here, but I'll be sitting on the front porch, holding that grand, granddaughter, thinking, okay, it's cool now cause you can often play and do this. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
And I think one of the questions we have to answer to ourselves is if it's gonna be a county's responsibility.
That's my point, yeah.
That's the first question we have to answer and then decide how much and how we're gonna do it.
Okay. Any other discussion on this before I take us, that's the end?
Do you need a motion to keep it on the?
No.
You stay on, let's go.
Is that the end of our?
That's the end of our.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Hendricks. Uh, any discussion, all those that favor, signal top raising your hand?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, we are adjourned.